Great. 6:30, let's call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Hostchild?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here. Announcements, do any counselors have any announcements this evening?
Neighborhood night out.
We do have Neighborhood Night Out tomorrow night from, is it five to eight at four thirty to eight thirty? Next door at the police fire complex. I also wanted to give my cautionary tale about public input. We will have different times when public input is available. Tonight, we do have a public hearing, so there will be public input allowed during that public hearing. The public hearing is for Road Improvement District. We also have a general public input on our agenda for items not on the agenda. And then, at the time each item is on the agenda, we will have a time available for public input to address that specific item, so that people understand that. Is there anything else from council? And we will start with our public hearing. Road Improvement District number 538, Richard Avenue, Lindgren Road, EV Drive, and a frontage road. Mr. Mulder?
Mayor, as you stated, we're looking at replace rebuilding Lindgren Road, building from scratch, Richard Avenue, doing a mill and overlay on EV Drive, and then redoing the frontage road between Quick Trip and Jersey City. Typically, when we have development, the developer pays the entire cost to build the road to serve their properties, and then they turn that over to the city. In this case, we have been looking at making these improvements for a number of years and have held off in part because we didn't have a good funding mechanism. We recently applied for and received a grant from the state of Minnesota for a local road improvement program. And we have a grant for $750,000 to apply toward this road improvement. And so initially, the thought was that we would split the cost of this project with either some grant money for about a half of it. The city would then chip in 25%, and the assessments would pay the last 25%. But because of this project is actually 1.9 and not 1.5, is the grant would cover 750,000. We are proposing assessments in total that right around the $500,000 mark. And then the city would take in the remaining almost $700,000 through various funding sources, including, you know, some water utility, stormwater, some... We identified some improvements in the street lighting, so some street lighting fund could do that. And then also just general levy through a bond. So that's kind of what we're talking about doing. The assessments are considerably more than the average road improvement assessment on a residential one, because this is commercial, and this is involving the building of roads as opposed to just reconstructing them. And so we have, you know, the assessments are considerably more than that amount, and would be consistent with, you know, the assessment agreement that we have already in place for one of the parcels.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from members of the council about this public hearing?
No, I just think it's important to note that we've had interest in some of the parcels for a nice size of commercial development. But that was not able to move forward because we did not have that road access. And we all know that our decision and our dream is to have that as a development, commercial development opportunity in that location. It's been a very strategic plan for us to do that. And this allows us the ability to do that. And I know we have somebody here with us tonight that has invested and been a big part of that development, and just to be able to continue to see that happen.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Now we will open up for public input. If anybody in chambers has any input on this matter, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone present in chambers that wishes to comment on this matter? We will move to our online attendees. Is there anyone present in the online meeting that wishes to comment on the public hearing for Road Improvement District number 538? If anyone online or in the chambers wishes to comment on Road Improvement District number 538, please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, I've asked folks to unmute if they're interested in the online setting, and no one has, so I think we're okay.
Thank you. With that, with no public input, we will close the public hearing and move to item B on our agenda, Resolution 2021-87, Resolution ordering improvement and directing preparation of final plans and specifications for Road Improvement District number 538, Richard Avenue, Lindgren Road, EV Drive, and a frontage road. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder, do you need to add anything at this time?
Well, the other thing I would say is that we talked about at the pre-agenda meeting about sending out specific notices about those assessments to the affected property owners and inviting them to a discussion about that sometime in September. So we will follow up on that.
Is there anything from council?
I just appreciate the staff's willingness to go through that extra step of communication and working with those property owners, make sure everybody's well understood of what that looks like and means to them as a business.
Yeah, just to add to that point, I think it's important that the property owners see the assessment year in advance before we start making those decisions. So I think now is a good time for them to know those numbers.
And we need to remember, it's the assessment proposal. The final assessment won't be known until the project's done.
Absolutely.
With nothing from council, roll call, please.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution 2021-88, Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for engineering services with a total not to exceed contract amount of $180,385, Road Improvement District number 538, Richard Avenue, Lindgren Road, EV Drive, and a frontage road with Northland Consulting Engineers. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Hostchild, second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, is there anything needed on this?
Just to clarify is that this is going to be the contract with David Ball, Northland Consulting Engineers. We did not go through a process of looking for RFPs because we wanted to move this project along as soon as we could, and we just received the grant, you know, first part of July.
And just to clarify that we've got a timeline for that project, correct? Which is part of the purpose of going through it that way.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
Mr. Mayor, just I have my usual statement with our contracts and Northland Consulting Engineers, that my son worked for Northland Consulting Engineers, and the result of this contract has no financial gain for either my son or myself.
Thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Communications. Communications, there's nothing listed on the agenda. Do we need to address that, Mr. Mulder?
You have the list in your packet. If there's any items that you wanted copies of, we can make those available. There were some kind of follow-up to the discussion last month about the subdivision being proposed. We did not include those in the packet per se, because there wasn't anything that was specifically addressed on the agenda for that, on that issue.
Thank you. We have no presentations. This is public discussion. This is the time that a member of the public can address any item not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your time to three minutes per person. Is there anyone that wishes to discuss general items to the council at this time? If so, please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Lisa Smith. I live at 3761 Johnson Road, and I'm online today. I would just like to, if it's okay, mention to the city councilors there, if you have not seen the communication that I did send through, which is not being discussed tonight. So last month, there was quite a bit of discussion about the Carlson Road extension. And I understand that the preliminary plat was reviewed. However, after that time, the idea was brought forth to put in the, put in a trail extension in place of that Carlson Road rather than as a stub at the end of, at the end of Johnson Road where it meets up with Portland. And I think it's a fabulous idea. I would like the counselors to maybe consider that before the final vote takes place. I know that another vote can take place, and I also know that changes could be made at this point if deemed reasonable. I think it's an awesome idea. It would allow for all of the emergency access that you've deemed really important for that development. The trails that are put in and that we've been walking look fabulous. They look like a great alternative to having a full wide road next to our property, next to my property on Johnson Road. And I would just really like you to consider that as an option. It wouldn't take a huge amount of change to the development on Mr. Zierden's part, and I just ask that you think about it, please. We've tried, you know, everything we know to peacefully ask that a new road not be put in there because of the traffic counts and the safety to our neighborhood. And this is a great alternative to that, which would, you know, which would take care of everybody's needs in this case. So that's all I have to say. I'm just hoping that you will all consider that very seriously. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else either in chambers or online that wishes to speak to the council about any item not on the agenda at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record. This will be the last opportunity for public comment under this portion of the agenda. There is opportunities for comment later in items that are on the agenda. Would anyone like to address general topics to the council at this time? With no public discussion, we will move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda that includes minutes and accounts payable?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Geisler. Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. And next is motions. Motion to approve the following counselors as representatives to negotiate with the following unions. Mr. Mulder, would you read that list?
Representative for the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 49, it'll be Counselors or Mayor Boucher and Counselor Hostchild. For the LELS Local 47, it'll be Counselor Geisler and Counselor Peterson. And for ASME, it'll be Mayor Boucher and Counselor Nelson.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call for that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Hostchild. Do we have any questions or comments to council?
No, I'm just happy to see us getting this moving and with the hope of having this done by the end of the year. We've been successful in that in the past, and I'm just looking forward to those conversations.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this matter, either online or in chambers? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Any public input on the motion for the appointment of negotiating elected representatives? Roll call.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Ordinances, first one is ordinance 2021-04, the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 1000 State Building Code of the Hermantown Code of Ordinances. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Hostchild. Mr. Mulder?
So this is updating the ordinance relative to the building code, Chapter 10, just to kind of conform to recent statutes in Minnesota, changes in Minnesota statutes.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? I believe this is normally a yearly procedure when statutes change. Is there anyone either online or in chambers that wishes to comment on ordinance 2021-04? If anyone wishes to comment on ordinance 2021-04, please state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. And I want to state that for the next two ordinances, for those either in chambers or online, that there will not be public comment, because this is the first reading, and there will be no votes or action taken this evening. Next is ordinance 2021-05, an ordinance amending Chapter 9 Utilities and Services of the City of Hermantown. This is the first reading. Mr. Mulder, do we have a brief explanation of it?
I was hoping Mr. Arm could give that brief explanation.
Mr. Arm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. City staff and city attorney met several times. It has been well over decades since these ordinances have been updated. So we went through both in the context of updating things that have changed in our world, and also we added some language regarding the ability to impose sewer availability, sewer availability and water availability charges. We did a few other things like removing Section 905 and combining that into Section 9340. Basically, there's a lot of little changes, and it's an update from, it's been years since this has been like that, and that's the result of what you have before you as the first reading, the result of that.
Thank you. And we will move on to ordinance 2021-06, an ordinance amending Section 230.02 Utility Commission of the Hermantown City Code. This is also a first reading. Mr. Mulder, is there a short description of this?
Yeah, this is simply removing the requirement that the utility commission review the annual reports of the various franchise agreements.
Thank you. Being first reading, we will move on to resolutions. Resolution 2021-89, Resolution of the City of Hermantown, Minnesota, approving session laws 2021, First Special Sessions, Chapter 14, Article 8, Section 8. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Hostchild. Mr. Mulder?
So the legislature passed the city's request for a sales tax of an additional half a percent for the community recreation initiative. And so the next step in that process is to approve those laws, those special session laws. And then, following that, then it goes to a referendum in November of 2022.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public comment on this, either in the chambers or online? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Requesting public comment on Resolution 2021-89. With no public comment, I'd ask for a roll call.
Counselor Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution 2021-90, Resolution approving a special use permit for a greenhouse nursery, sales, and production at 4168 Lindahl Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Nelson, second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder, should Mr. Johnson take this one?
Yes, please.
Eric, could you explain this one to us?
Yes, thank you very much. This is an application for, as you mentioned, greenhouse nursery, sales, and production on a residentially zoned property located at 4168 Lindahl Road. It's approximately 20-acre site that's located about a third of a mile north of Maple Grove Road. The applicant is proposing to have three greenhouses on the property, ranging in size from 10 feet by 10 feet up to 12 feet by 24, as well as a separate small gravel parking lot and a sales building. What they're looking to do is have seasonal sales on this property, ranging from late spring to early fall, open seven days a week, approximately from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Once again, this is for the production and sales of flowers, cuttings, plants, et cetera, that way.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Have we received any feedback from any of the neighbors?
No, we have not. And at the planning and zoning, there were no public comment.
Any other questions or comments? We'll open it up to public comment at this time. Is there anyone either present in chambers or in the online meeting that wishes to comment on Resolution 2021-90, approving a special use permit for a greenhouse nursery? If anyone wishes to comment on Resolution 2021-90, please state your name and address for the record. With no comment, roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2021-91, Resolution approving final plat of Peyton Acres Phase 1B and imposing conditions on the final plat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Hostchild. Mr. Mulder, would we like Mr. Johnson to go over this one?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Last year, the council had seen the both preliminary plat for both Phase 1A and 1B, and then they approved the final plat for Phase 1A. That was six lots that take access off of Stebner Road. That's been under construction for the past year and is close to being marketed for sales. This next phase is 1B. It's continuing that roadway that the developers built so far from Stebner, as well as those existing utilities, pushing those towards the east. This Phase 1B plat will be for 10 residential lots. They will all be greater than one-half acre in size, which are our standard R3 lots that we have. As part of this development, there will be an urban section roadway, 28-foot width paved surface along with curb and gutter, and there will also be sidewalk on one side of the roadway as well. There will also be a pond in its own separate easement that will serve this portion of the development phase as well. Eventually, there will be another three phases associated with this project extending to the east and south. Eventually, there will be connection onto Oak Ridge Road at a future phase date, potentially maybe in '22 or '23 for that.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council at this time?
I would just say that it's important for us to note that at later stages, to Eric's point, this is going to be fully, I forget the word, connected through to two accesses. So at this point, it does appear to be individual cul-de-sacs, but it will be connected per the full development plan.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone either present in chambers or online that wishes to comment on Resolution 2021-91? If there are any comments on this resolution, please state your name and address for the record. With no public comment, I would ask for a roll call.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution 2021-92, Resolution accepting quote from HMI Duluth for repairs on Arrowhead Road in the amount of $55,400.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, second by Counselor Hostchild. Mr. Mulder?
Yeah, there are two areas on Hermantown Road. One is near the Essentia Clinic, near Highway 53. There's just a section there that the water can't get to the, because of the roads buckle a little bit, the curb and gutters change a little bit, so the water's not getting to the catch basin, so we just need to make some repairs there. The same thing has happened on west of the elementary school. There's a section there where the road has buckled a little bit, so water's not getting to the catch basin, so we just need to make those corrections.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. It's time for public input. Is there anyone either present in chambers or online that wishes to comment on Resolution 2021-92? If anyone wishes to comment on this repair of the Arrowhead Road, please state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counselor Hostchild?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution 2021-93, Resolution approving change order number one for Road Improvement District number 537, Levake Junction Road.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Counselor Peterson, second by Counselor Nelson. Mr. Mulder, would we like our city engineer to go over this?
Sure, if he's willing to do that.
Mr. Ball?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So change order one is associated with the rock removal on the top of the hill in regards to putting in the new water line. So there was a failed attempt at hammering the rock out, so we had to go to alternate means of boring the water main through the rock, and then we also had to do some... We lowered the grade, we hammered some rock out, we had to do some coring, we had to fill those core holes because that failed. And then we also, because of the presence of ledge rock in the ditch, we opted to add some curb and gutter on both sides of the road on top of that hill. So that's kind of in a short summary of the effort associated with that change order.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Can you just talk about the extension for the timeframe for the completion of the project? And just how that's been communicated and handled with the residents on that road, David, just briefly?
So the question is about, we added two weeks into the contract as part of this change order. They spent approximately three weeks in this area dealing with this rock. So that, in negotiations with the contractor on this change order, he felt it was the appropriate time to request the extra two weeks, even though he doesn't feel that that is appropriate or that he'll need that time. He still wanted to kind of cover his bases rather than having to come back to the council at the, when we're nearing the original completion date. So how was this communicated to the residents? There's been many residents at our weekly meetings. We've told them that this, you know, this work has added time to the contract. We have not specifically, the contractual items are typically not part of the discussion items at our construction meetings. So the residents... construction meetings. So they, the residents are, were not aware of a time extension. We have a meeting tomorrow and I can certainly, you know, bring that up, that we, we will be adding two weeks to the contract time. However, the contractors' schedule still has this project done well ahead of the, the original timeline.
And I just think that's a great thing just to share with them. Worst case scenario, right? We're looking at this, but shouldn't need that, just so that they're well informed.
We'll certainly do that tomorrow.
And overall, would you say the communication and support for the project from the road, from the residents has been positive?
It's, it's been overwhelmingly positive. There's definitely questions about process and schedule. That's typical of a project of this nature. So between Joe, myself and the inspector, I, I think we've done a very good job getting the, communicating the, the word on what we're doing out there.
Well, I appreciate you doing those weekly meetings. I know that's important. So thank you for that work.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
I agree.
Is there any public input on this matter? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on change order number one for Road Improvement District number five thirty seven? Roll call, please.
Counsel Nelson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Geisler.
Aye.
Hostchild.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty one dash nine four. Resolution approving pay request number four for Road Improvement District number five thirty seven, Levake Junction Road to Yulin Brothers Incorporated in the amount of three hundred eighty seven thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and nine cents. Do we, do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counsel Hostchild, second by Counsel Geisler. Mr. Mulder?
This is just the, for the work completed on Levake Junction through, end of July.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on pay request number four for Road Improvement District number five thirty seven? If there is any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty one dash nine four, please state your name and address for the record. Roll call, please.
Counsel Peterson.
Aye.
Geisler.
Aye.
Hostchild.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. And we are at the end of our business. Do we have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess. Second.
Motion by Counsel Peterson, second by Counsel Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.